I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us this evening for this regularly scheduled city council meeting. Okay, could you call the roll?
Harold?
Here.
Colin Baugh?
Here.
Leontis?
President.
Fitz?
Here.
Robinette?
Here.
Roland?
Here.
Zanfordino?
Here.
The minutes from our February 3rd meeting have been distributed to everyone prior to this moment. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, or do I need a motion, right? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
All right, properly moved in second.
And all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Good job for the minutes. Correspondents?
I have no correspondence.
Good job, Katie. Special recognitions, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, we have several special presentations this evening, and our first special presentation, it gives me great pleasure to present ex-councilperson, a peer of all of ours, Bruce Jeffers, with a framed copy of the resolution honoring his service on Bowling Green City Council. Bruce, if you'd like to film Portland, please, I'd appreciate it. I'm not going to read all of the whereas and howpores because there are plenty, but suffice to say that this resolution that was considered by City Council on January 6th of this year 2020 does a really very good job of highlighting the many contributions of Mr. Jeffers during his time on City Council. I'm proud to say that during Bruce's service on Council, I was on City Council as well, and I was always impressed with his dedication to the work, his approach to the work that we did. He was research-oriented, was a tremendous communicator, and total, he was just an outstanding public servant to our community, so it gives me great pleasure to present this to you today. I do want to read, though, the final section summing it all up because the words are important. That the Council of Bowling Green, on behalf of the government and the citizens of this municipality, thus hereby thank and commend Mr. Jeffers, Councilmember-at-large, for his loyal service, distinguished achievements, and outstanding performance of civic responsibility, while a member of the City Council en wishes him much satisfaction in his future endeavors. So if you'd please join me in thanking Bruce Jeffers for his service to our community.
Thank you very much, Mayor Osbacher. I really appreciate this. It's nice to come back and see such a good crew here, and I know you're doing good work and working really hard, and it's nice to look out at the crowd and see a lot of people. I spent several years working with, and it was a lot of fun, and I'm glad I had that opportunity, and go Bowling Green!
Our second special presentation this evening involves recognition of outstanding
service, really above the call of duty, on behalf of a couple of our members of our police division. I must say, it gives me really great pride this evening to stand out here and look out at the audience and see all these fine members of our police division. I always want to take advantage of every opportunity that I can to acknowledge the work that they do and publicly express to them my gratification and my thanks for the work that you provide to our community on a daily basis. You're so professional, you're so skilled and so dedicated, and our community is really fortunate for your service, so thank you all. So at this point, I'm going to ask Chief Patrick to please come up and help us with these special recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President. It's my honor tonight to offer commendation to two of our outstanding veteran police officers this evening, both of whom's efforts resulted in the saving of a life. At this time, I'd like to call up Officer Jason Brochus. Officer Jason Brochus, this is the Meritorious Service Award commendation, date of incident November 21st, 2019. Officer Jason Brochus was on duty and responded to a call on Crim Street regarding a 64-year-old male who had fallen and was unresponsive. Upon his arrival, he took over CPR that had been started by a family member. BG Fire responded and transported the man to the hospital where he underwent emergency surgery. He's now at home, expecting a full recovery. The actions of Officer Brochus that day helped save the man's life. Upon hearing of this incident, the Chief of Police ordered an investigation into the events of that day, and once the investigation was complete, a board of review was convened. The board, by unanimous vote, has elected to award Officer Brochus the Meritorious Service Award. This award reflects the high level of service that Officer Brochus provides to the community in the Bowling Green Police Division. Thank you, Officer Brochus.
Congratulations, Peter.
I now call up Officer Tyson Richmond. For meritorious service, date of incident November 22nd, 2019. Officer Tyson Richmond was on duty and responded outside the jurisdiction to assist the Wood County Sheriff's Office at an injury accident at US 6 and State Route 25. Upon arrival, Officer Richmond received information that the male who stopped to help had a first crash, was hit and severely injured by a passing car that had crashed into the first accident. Aid was being rendered by a second person in an attempt to stop heavy bleeding from the injured man's leg. Officer Richmond quickly determined that a second tourniquet was needed to fully stop the blood loss. He applied his belt-carried tourniquet to the man's leg, stopping the flow of blood. Officer Richmond's actions that day helped save the life of the injured subject. Upon hearing of this incident, Chief Police ordered an investigation into the events of that day, and by unanimous decision, the board convened, voted to award Officer Richmond the Meritorious Service Award. This award reflects the high level of service that Officer Richmond provides to the community and the Bowling Green Police Division. It should be noted, this is the second Meritorious Service Award that Officer Richmond has received for saving a life in the line of duty. The City of Bowling Green thanks Officer Richmond for his dedicated service.
We're so proud, so proud.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We have to pose perfectly.
The details of these two incidents are, to me, just amazing, and I think they, once again, demonstrate the tremendous skill and dedication of our officers. These two officers certainly are exemplary, but they're representative of our entire force, and once again, we thank you for your service.
I felt incredibly safe there for a moment. Okay, has anyone signed up for lobby visitations?
Yes, the first person is Nathan Everly.
Please come to the stand and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, City Councilmembers. My name is Nathan Everly, 907 Sandridge Road, here in wonderful Bowling Green, Ohio. I am a carryover from the last meeting of the CIC, and I just wanted to give just a quick brief remarks to the members of that committee, since I may not be able to attend in the next meeting, and I'm not sure if I can get everything but that. Kind of an opposite view, I've been fortunate to actually rent in three different wards here in Bowling Green in my time here, since I lived here in 2003. Time in the 2nd Ward and off of Derby Avenue, as well as North Main Street, just right around the corner, not the yellow big building, but the next one over, as well as South Maple Street. And though I know that the rental, the residences were not of the best conditions, and that it didn't have all the amenities, it didn't have triple pane, high or low E windows, and things that would make the structure the best, I kind of counter what some of the other discussion was, or that what we heard from kind of anecdotal and secondhand hearsay items, that there aren't this huge blight in our city from what I saw when I, especially when I ran for 3rd Ward and as I ran for at-large. Now, there are problem properties, there are issue properties, and collectively, as a community, we should look to do what we can to help improve not only those properties, but the overall image of Bowling Green, to be more conducive for growth, and more conducive for young professionals, as the young gentleman spoke to briefly in his remarks. But I just don't see the same thing as what we have. I just hope that maybe as the committee goes forward, as the councilmembers continue to deliberate this, that more evidence can be brought forward, as opposed to just, you know, me saying, hey, I had three great rentals, and another gentleman says I had three bad ones. I think that, as a community, we need to see what those are and have them really pointed out, so we know what the deficiencies are, so that community input can be in for regulations, for codifying things that can be part of maybe even the new zoning laws. But I just wanted to provide a few comments to the members, since, again, I might not be able to be at the next meeting or provide additional comment. It's not an easy task ahead, but definitely it's a great one to have the full community involved and provide input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Margaret Montague.
Again, if you'd please state your name and address.
Margaret Montague, 211 Willilord, Bowling Green. I'm here to just follow up on a message that I did send to council. I've been working on the task force and now the steering committee for Welcome BG, which is our logo here, and just a couple of statements that I would like to make. The Welcome BG Steering Committee is made up now of key leaders in the city, and we're actively working to attract and retain people of diverse backgrounds, including immigrants. And this is to meet our serious current and future labor workforce shortages, and to keep our city economically strong and thriving. So I've worked closely in both the task force and the steering committee with Sue Clark and Moja Bankwala, who's here as the Welcome BG Coordinator. And we would like to urge the City Council to formalize a system and a process that ensures interior health and safety standards of rental properties in the community and landlord accountability. I guess our focus has been renters coming to BG from other countries, from other cultures, from other places, may not be aware of all the procedures there are, or their rights as renters, and this is a population that we're also concerned about, and thus, they can be very vulnerable to speaking up when confronted with health and safety issues in places they are renting, to their own detriment. So implementing such a requirement would support making BG a welcoming, safe, and equitable community for our residents. I just wanted to put that to council, and thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel Gordon.
I would imagine you know the drill by now.
Never been in before in my life. Daniel Gordon, 249 Crim Street. Good evening, folks. As the former Chair of the Community Improvement Committee, I just wanted to thank all of you folks for having another public meeting about licensing and inspections. I think these are protections that are very much needed for the citizens of Bowling Green to protect our quality of life, and I'm here to add my voice to the number of folks encouraging you to adopt a program in some form. Mandatory licensing and inspections policy was at the heart of the work that we did together on housing when I was on City Council. We pushed for the better part of a decade to make sure that every Bowling Green resident has safe and affordable housing in a strong neighborhood. That momentum built through passage of the Land Use Plan Update in 2014, implementation of the Community Action Plan in 2018, and council's prioritization of improving neighborhoods as the top policy agenda item for the City of Bowling Green. This is the next natural step. Forward-thinking civic leaders like Rose Hess and City Council members and candidates like Gary Hess have been pushing for this policy change for decades. When my dad ran for City Council in 1987, he championed a similar policy. I was born in 1989. Now we're here over 32 years later, and we've been having this debate for longer than I've been alive. Let's end the debate and get this done. We know a voluntary system does not fully solve our problems. Yes, some landlords in town do a good job. Not all of them do. We need to protect our residents. The people of Bowling Green deserve a high quality of life, and a mandatory licensing and inspections policy will help get us there. There's never been a clear moment for change, and you have a once-in-a-generation opportunity to get this done and get it done right. Please don't let it go to waste. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President? If I could just ask, we had at least one more, we had one more person that was hoping to speak in the first meeting that might not have known he had to sign up for the second meeting. Is there still a man named Ralph here that was hoping to speak in the first meeting? I didn't think so, but I certainly wanted to make sure. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, can you lead us in reading of the legislation?
Mr. President? We're going to introduce some legislation.
Sounds good.
Mr. President?
Mr. Robinette?
On behalf of the Finance Committee, I have an ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, during the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2020, and ending December 31st, 2020. I would like to point out, clarify the reason for everyone's benefit here, that this deals with a cause-of-life device. $48,985, only $12,246 is being picked up by the city, the rest are coming from grants. So I just wanted to make everyone clear why we're approving that tonight. Thank you.
First, Dr. Leontis. I have an ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to accept a utility assessment from TDCH Properties Limited, as regards inheasement in Pezzels Farms subdivision Platte, and is needed to access and maintain underground electric service. One reading is requested. Mr. President, I have another one.
Go ahead and lay them all out.
Lay them all out, okay. I have an ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to transfer approximately 2.5 acres of city-owned property located in Bellard and Business Park to the Bowling Green Community Development Foundation in lieu of dues. That's all I have to say. Okay, thank you. And I think there's one more I have to read.
There is.
Oh, what about this one here? Yeah, see, there's one there. Okay, that was right. And finally, I have an ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to lease city-owned spare conduit infrastructure, not currently necessary for municipal purposes.
That takes us into official reports. Mr. Mayor, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm pleased this evening to publicly announce the appointment of Brad Holman as the new City Engineer. Brad's with us this evening, so that he would like, would appreciate an opportunity to meet you all after the meeting, if you have not met him yet. Mr. Holman has been in the Engineering Division for several years now, in his previous capacity as a civil engineer. He grew up in Northwest Ohio, attended Arcadia High School. He obtained a civil engineering degree from Ohio Northern University in 2009. After graduation, Mr. Holman worked in a private engineering firm in Toledo, where he acquired extensive experience in designing water and sewer infrastructure systems, along with improvements to wastewater treatment facilities. Brad and his, let me see, Brad and his wife and two children live in Bowling Green, and we are really thankful to, really thankful for Brad for stepping up and taking the lead in the Engineering Division. He's proven to be an outstanding engineer and an outstanding employee, coordinating with all of the appropriate divisions, and we're really thankful that he's going to be serving our community from this point forward as the City Engineer. So Brad, thank you very much, and welcome. That's all I have, subject to any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions for the mayor?
Just a comment, and it's always good to have a civil, civil servant.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Mayor, I just would, I just would like to say thank you for your clearly articulated priorities that you presented on Saturday. I think that helps all of us move forward in a positive direction, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity presented by President Holman about to present my goals, and we'll look forward to hearing the product of your work on that day and figuring out how we can begin to work together to start pecking away at some of these strategic goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Municipal Administrator, Ms. Trentor.
Care to have that? Good evening. Just add my congratulations and thanks to Brad for accepting the position of City Engineer. We know he's going to be, do an outstanding job. He definitely, just to echo the mayor's words, has been a valuable member of our team thus far, in coordination, cooperation, working not only as an internal team, but working with external, you know, various sources, various people in the community. Brad has proven his abilities, and we have the utmost confidence in him as he moves forward in this new position. A couple things for you this evening. One is that I've made note of councilmembers asking about the status of implementing the recommendations from the Bicycle Safety Commission, and so I wanted to take a little bit of time to address that matter and where we are in that process. The Bicycle Safety Commission, the Council Transportation and Safety Committee, and all of council, in fact, previous council before the one sitting here, although many of you were members of it, have been working over the past several years on how best to implement strategies for improving bicycle safety in our community. Several years ago, as a large resurfacing project on Conia and Fairview was developed, options for improved bicycling, everything ranging from off-road bike lanes to on-street bike lanes, were examined. While the final decision for that project was adding charros, it was realized that recommendations on treatments cannot be made in the same year as the project. So as a result, several joint meetings of the Council Transportation and Safety Committee and the Bicycle Safety Commission were held. It was determined that consideration of treatments would be made when roads are resurfaced. However, to make that process smoother, the Bicycle Safety Commission made a list of recommended treatments to be considered at such time as roadwork is identified. That list was then passed to City Council, and the administration has done an overlay of that list on its proposed paving schedule. At the March 2nd council meeting, I will share with you that list, as well as a map of where the recommendations align with the upcoming paving program. The Bicycle Safety Commission spent a great deal of time and put considerable effort into the list, and it's proving to be a beneficial tool as plans are made for 2020 and beyond. Recently, a member of council asked why nothing from this list had been implemented, and considering that list, that reason is timing. The list was approved after the 2019 paving program was contracted. However, as a point of note, I do want to let you know that a 2019 project, Manville Avenue, has a recommendation for a treatment of charros, and that will be installed per those recommendations in this coming year. We also are applying that list to the 2020 paving program. Again, that will be presented to you at your next meeting. So council may be wondering what its role is moving forward. As mentioned, the tool from Bicycle Safety Commission is certainly valuable, but it does not contain recommendations about on-street parking or other traffic modifications. Simply, this was just not a question that was put to the Bicycle Safety Commission. It is possible that future projects may warrant consideration of amendments to traffic control, on-street parking, one-way streets. When streets are presented to you on March 2nd, we will highlight those streets that you may wish to study to bolster the recommendations from the Bicycle Safety Commission. I've also heard it mentioned that complete streets mean much more than just bicycles, and that is most certainly true. ADA upgrades are incorporated into city projects, and efforts to improve sidewalks in tandem with roads are done when feasible. Fairview Avenue is a strong example of that pairing. So in summary, we will plan to share the map and matrix of the 2020 Paving Bicycle Safety Commission overlay at the March 2nd council meeting. You will note that Planning Director Heather Saylor is not with us this evening, she had another commitment. However, she did present and share with me, to share with you, the 2019 review of the Planning Department activities. You can take that and pass that down. I will not read through all of this, but please allow me to give some highlights. 2019 was a very busy year for our planning department. In the area of residential, 329 zoning permits were issued, it's actually 325, I don't know where I picked up the nine, but it's 325. As a comparison number, in 2018, that number was 274. In the area of commercial, 72 permits were issued in 2019 as compared to 65 in 2018. And then in the industrial area, we had seven permits in 2019 compared to 27 in 2018. We also had five new institutional, new constructions in 2019, we didn't have any in 2018. So the total zoning permits issued in 2019 were 414 as compared to the prior year of being 382. And various information about the Zoning Board of Appeals, code enforcement, the Planning Commission are also included in the packet, and Joe will, I think, email, or Heather will email this packet to the media, or we can make you copies after the meeting. And that completes my report this evening, subject to your questions.
Are there any questions for the mayor?
Mr. President? I just wanted to say thank you for the news about Manville Road Avenue, that's the best news I've heard in a while. Will that be painted-on charros, or will those be the stencil type?
Painted-on.
Excellent news.
I would just say we're really looking forward to the next meeting and getting the plan. Thank you very much for the update.
Thank you very much. Parks and Recreation Director, Sotley.
Very quickly, just one update, and those of you in the back, press release tomorrow on this. But our next focus group meeting was originally scheduled for next week on February 24th. Dr. Ohr's class schedule changed from when we set all these dates, and she now is teaching a three-hour Monday evening class, and so we do not want to interfere with the education of the BG SU students and have her cancel class to run our focus group. So we have moved that to March 10th, and all of those, again, are at 7 o'clock at the Community Center in the meeting rooms, childcare is provided, and the topic of this one is the Community Center and all programming and events. And then our last one is still, that date is correct, on the 31st, which would be City Park and the pool. So we'll be getting notifications out about that tomorrow, but just thought this would be a good time to let you know that. So do not come next Monday, and instead, come on March 10th. And that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Any questions?
Yes, thanks, Kristen. What time is the meeting on the 31st? Is that 7?
Yes, also at 7:00. Yep. The 31st, yeah, that hasn't changed. It's City Park and the pool.
Anything else? You very much.
Thanks.
Kay, City Attorney. Any questions for Mr. Marsh? Utilities Director. Any questions for Ryan? Utilities Director, Mr. Kraft.
For Public Works?
Oh, I'm sorry. Public Works. At least I had the name right.
If you say Brian, that'd be all right.
Yeah.
That's true. All right. Anyone have any questions? Anyone have any questions about anything for Mr. Kraft? Okay. All right, well, let's see. That brings us to council committee reports. Are there any council committee reports this evening?
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Fips.
Given our most recent joint Planning Commission and City Council meeting, I think it's prudent that we move the new Gateway Zoning District forward. Thus, I am making a motion to recommend that City Council refer the proposed BG Gateway Zoning District to the Planning Commission for their review and recommending.
Second.
Properly moved in second. This is a voice vote, would it be?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor say yea.
Yea.
All opposed say nay. Okay, the yays have it. Anything else?
Yes, Mr. President. Tonight, we had our third Community Improvement Committee meeting regarding exploring the possibilities of rental inspections or registration in town. We ran out of time, as I feared, so I'd actually like to use this time just for a little bit of public announcement related to that committee. And gentlemen, jump in if there's something I'm forgetting. But we've been working on a survey to property owners, and it's, you know, had a few drafts, Google Doc. I'm getting incredibly adept with Google Docs since I've been at Neocles. But we haven't gotten that out yet. There came a question late last week about Sunshine Law, possible violation of working out a survey via email. And Mike, thank you very much for your quick response this morning. As I suspected, we're in a position, we're allowed to work out that kind of detail outside of a public meeting. It's the kind of minutia we really couldn't put the public through. So we have been, you know, working on the wording of that, but it was just today that we got the go-ahead from Mike Marsh after my email of just yesterday that we can create surveys online, and then if anyone's ever interested in the process, they can, you know, seek our emails. So now that we have that hurdle cleared, Neocles, I've asked you to route them again. We have one for the property owners and one for tenants. I really think we should get this out sooner than later, so what would be a reasonable timeline to try to get this out by, do you guys feel? If you were to route it tomorrow, Neocles?
I'll get it out tomorrow.
Bill, you're the one that has, of course, a full-time job. Do you think we can have this out? What would be realistic for you?
If you could get back to us by the weekend, then we can get it out really next week.
Oh, yeah, no problem. No problem.
Excellent. I think it's imperative we get that out real soon. But, you know, I think another development that's equally important and relevant is President Hollenbach suggested last week that in addition to doing the survey to property owners, that we also have one of our meetings devoted to this topic be like a panel discussion with property owners. And as soon as Mark suggested that to me, I, you know, bounced it off the committee members, and we're certainly all in agreement. So I've reached out to the local landlord association, and we're trying to work out a date that works for everybody. I believe that date will be March 10th, but that's certainly tentative at this point. But what that meeting will entail is rather than a public hearing and guests, as we've been having, it'll just be a roundtable up at this table with the three committee members and a maximum of five property owners from the group, and we'll make that part of our ongoing discussion. And if time allows that night, there will also be hopefully people in attendance, and then we'll, depending on how time looks, also open up that meeting for additional public comment. Other than that, our next meeting is next Thursday, which is February 27th. I believe it starts at 5:00. Is that correct, Kay?
That's correct.
Thank you, Kay. That's everything, Mr. President.
Want to announce meeting? You have one?
It's already on Kay's calendar. Would you like me?
You need a public announcement.
Oh, thank you, guys. Okay. So at 6 o'clock, right before our next meeting on March 2nd, there will be a zoning planning and economic development committee meeting. Thank you, guys.
March?
Is that everything? All right. Hey, would you lead us in the reading of legislation?
Legislation for first reading, ordinance number 8827 for first reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2020 and ending December 31, 2020.
Suspend the rules.
Do we, oh, we do? Okay. I move to suspend the rules for ordinance 8827.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay?
Hollenbach?
Yes.
Leontis?
Yes.
Pips?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zamfordino?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Okay. Rules are suspended for ordinance 8827.
Ordinance number 8827 for second and third reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2020 and ending December 31, 2020.
Mr. President?
Mr. Robinette?
I move to adopt ordinance 8827.
Second.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay. Kay, could you roll?
Leontis?
Yes.
Pips?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zamfordino?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbach?
Yep. Right, so means ordinance 8827 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8828 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to accept a utility easement from TBCH Properties Limited. Ordinance number 8829 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to transfer approximately 2.5 acres of city-owned property located in Bellard Business Park to the Bowling Green Community Development Foundation in lieu of dues and declaring an emergency.
I move to--
Suspend the rules.
I'm moving to suspend the rules, Mr. President.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Kay, can you call the roll?
Pips?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zamfordino?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbach?
Yes.
Leontis?
Yes.
Mr. President?
It's Mr. Leontis.
No. I have to read it again.
Oh, yes.
Do you want to declare the motion, Jerry?
You go ahead.
Okay. Ordinance number 8829 for second and third reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to transfer approximately 2.5 acres of city-owned property located in Bellard Business Park to the Bowling Green Community Development Foundation in lieu of dues and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President? I move to pass this ordinance.
Second.
Mr. President?
We need to adopt the emergency clause first.
Oh, we haven't done that yet?
No.
Okay. I move that we adopt the emergency clause.
That's correct.
Second.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. Kay?
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zamfordino?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbach?
Yes.
Leontis?
Yes.
Pips?
Yes.
Now I move that we adopt this ordinance.
Second.
Okay. Properly moved and seconded? I think, is it? I detected a little--
Yeah, I'm sorry, just usually you would say the motion passes, so that it's--
Okay. All right. So the motion--
The emergency clause passed.
The motion on the emergency clause passes.
Right. So now we have a motion to adopt, and I need to call the roll.
Please.
Roland?
Yes.
Zamfordino?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbach?
I'm not sure. Yes.
Leontis?
Yes.
Leontis?
Yes.
Pips?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes. Okay. I'm completely lost on this one. Have we approved it yet?
Yes. That adopted.
Outstanding. Ordinance 8829 is blessedly adopted.
Ordinance number 8830 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing Utilities Director to lease city-owned spare conduit infrastructure not currently necessary for municipal purposes. Legislation for second reading. Resolution number 3755 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio to file a capital and operating plan for the years 2020 through 2023 with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. Department of Transportation as authorized under federal transit laws as codified. 49 USC Section 5311 Financial Assistance for Other Than Urbanized Areas. Resolution number 3756 for second reading. Or, a resolution authorizing the filing of a proposal and/or application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Transit Administration as authorized under federal transit laws as codified 49 USC Section 5311 Financial Assistance for Other Than Urbanized Areas and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program, executing a contract grant for the fiscal year 2021 Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program and 5339 and/or 5311 funding for capital and/or operating assistance, and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant proposal and/or application approval. Resolution number 3757 for second reading. Resolution authorizing the municipal administrator to enter into a contract to provide fire protection outside the incorporated limits of the city.
Mr. President?
Mr. Harold?
I move that we suspend the rules and give Resolution 3757 its third reading.
Second. Okay, properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, Kay, could you call the roll?
Zamfordino?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbach?
Yes.
Leontis?
Yes.
Pips?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
That was the third reading?
No, that was the second reading. That was a motion carried, rules suspended.
Are suspended for Resolution 3757.
That's correct. So Resolution number 3757 for third reading. Resolution authorizing municipal administrator to enter into a contract to provide fire protection outside the incorporated limits of the city.
Mr. President?
Mr. Harold?
I move that we adopt Resolution 3757.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Kay?
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbach?
Yes.
Leontis?
Yes.
Pips?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zamfordino?
Yes. All right, Resolution 3757 is adopted.
Resolution number 3758 for second reading. Resolution adopting the Bowling Green Fire Division five-year strategic plan. Resolution number 3759 for second reading. Resolution adopting the Bowling Green Fire Division standards of cover for 2019. Ordinance number 8825 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and the Utilities Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for the supplying and cleaning of uniforms for the Public Works Department and the Utilities Department. Ordinance number 8826 for second reading. Ordinance accepting an easement from Mauer Rentals LLC and dedicating the property for right-of-way purposes. Legislation for third reading. Ordinance number 8819 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for sidewalk improvements, pavement striping, de-icing salt, and improving streets, alleys, and other public ways in the city of Bowling Green, Ohio.
Mr. President?
Mr. Robinette?
I move that we adopt ordinance 8819.
Second.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, could you call the roll?
Hollenbach?
Yes.
Leontis?
Yes.
Pips?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zamfordino?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Ordinance 8819 adopted.
Ordinance 8820 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and the Utilities Director to enter into a contract or contracts with specified vendors for work that may exceed $50,000 annually for calendar year 2020.
Mr. President?
Mr. Robinette?
I move that we adopt ordinance 8820.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay?
Leontis?
Yes.
Pips?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zamfordino?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbach?
Yes. Okay. Ordinance 8820 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8821 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and the Utilities Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts and/or participate in state of Ohio or federal purchasing programs for the purchase and/or lease of vehicles, equipment, and completion of projects, as well as the trade-in or outright sale of vehicles and equipment no longer needed for municipal purposes.
Mr. President?
Mr. Robinette?
I move that we adopt ordinance 8821.
Second. Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay?
Pips?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zamfordino?
Yes.[1687.72]